Take care not to screen share your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. Meeting materials, all supporting materials that have been provided members of this body are available on the town's website, unless otherwise noted. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda unless the chair notes otherwise. Meeting business ground rules. We are now turning to the first item on the agenda. Before we do so, permit me to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. I will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After they conclude their remarks, the chair will go down the line of the members inviting each by name to provide any comment, questions, or motions. Please hold until your name is called. Please remember to mute your phone or computer when you are not speaking. Please remember to speak clearly and in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. For any response, please wait until the chair yields the floor to you and state your name before speaking. Finally, each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by a roll call vote. With that said, let's go to the agenda. The first item on the agenda is a COVID-19 update. I will turn to Kate and to Tim McDonald for to take this agenda item. Thank you.
I'll turn it right over to Tim.
So this is Timothy McDonald. I'm the Director of Health and Human Services here in the town of Needham, and I'm glad to be speaking to the select board today. I wanted to provide you with a brief update and answer any questions that you might have. As the select board knows, the COVID-19 outbreak is a serious situation that's affecting Needham, the Commonwealth and the entire country. Needham has taken a number of steps to try to inform and educate residents about the dangers of COVID-19 and about the steps they can take to keep themselves and their loved ones safe. I want to talk to you about a few of those steps and highlight some of the most important ones and also tell you a little bit about how the town is trying to make sure that we can still provide important services to our residents. The two areas I wanted to really highlight today is the importance of social distancing. The board has heard me speak about this topic before, but it's a very important issue. The police department informed my office yesterday that they had to go to two different parks and inform large gatherings of young adults and teens to disperse. So we hope Needham residents are taking seriously the strong, strong guidance to social distance. And that means it means you can go outside, but it means not congregating in large groups. It means keeping six feet between yourself and other people. And it means paying specific attention to how you go out and interact in public. And that might mean more limited shopping experiences. It might mean, you know, keeping a larger space between yourself and others in public settings. Many of Needham's retailers have already taken steps to help that. Trader Joe's, for example, has carefully marked out six-foot blocks between people waiting in line to get into the store. So a lot of retailers are doing their part to help residents maintain social distance. And we need the residents to make sure they're doing their part as well. Another area I wanted to highlight for the select board is mental health. This can be a very challenging time for residents of all ages. The normal sort of everyday life that many people enjoyed has changed drastically. They are able to get less exercise, interact with fewer people. Many people miss sort of the day-to-day interaction with their friends and colleagues, and it can have a profound effect on mental health. We want people to know that there are resources that the town has available. And foremost among them is the Interface Referral Service. The board has heard me speak about Interface before. It's funded through a generous donation from the Kyle Shapiro Foundation and the Beth Israel League Hospital. It's a service that will speak to you and understand your needs and will match you up with a clinician who accepts your insurance, is available on the days that you are or the hours you are. Most importantly in this time, it will connect you with a clinician who's willing to work through telemedicine, who will connect with you virtually to talk about the issues that are challenging you and help you work to solutions. It's particularly important, and we want the residents to know that that resource is available. And I just wanted to highlight it for the select board. As the select board knows, there's approximately 2,500 cases of COVID-19 in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Needham does publish the number of cases in its community every Tuesday to keep residents aware. But we want to continue to remind residents that the number of cases is not representative, the number of cases announced is not representative of the total number of cases in the community because of the limited availability of testing. And the select board has heard me say that before, but it remains true. Testing is not available in the volume that we hope it would be for members of the public, for the broad sectors of society. That's improving, that's improving at a very, very modest rate. So when we say that there are, as we announced this Tuesday, eight cases in the community and one, eight active cases and one recovered resident, that's really a much, it's a tip of the iceberg. It's a, it's a small number that, and we, we think the number of infected residents is much larger. So that's why social distancing is so important. I did want to highlight a few things earlier this week. The governor revised his guidance and directives to the state, including a much more strict restriction on businesses to limit non-essential services and to limit sort of non-essential public interactions. He pushed back the potential opening of schools and daycares, which was originally going to be April 7th. He pushed that back to now be May 4th. He also sort of clarified, as I said, the, the type of businesses that were defined as essential and the type of operations that could continue in a safe manner. I wanted to mention briefly for the select board a few items. The town is working hard, especially for those residents that are in our high-risk category, which is seniors and those with heart disease, lung disease like COPD or asthma, as well as diabetes. Particularly, we're focused on those residents who are in the senior age group. And there's a number of things that we are doing to try to help make sure that they have the services and support they need during this challenging time. There's always the traveling meals program that's been in place for a long time. And actually is at record volume of residents. And though four dozen residents got meals yesterday from the traveling meals program. We have also instituted a replacement for the CATH lunch program. The program that was run at the Center of the Heights, it provided both nutrition and socialization to seniors. We're trying to replicate the socialization through calls with our staff, as well as calls from youth in the community who are volunteering to call neighbors and friends who, who need sort of an interactive portion of their day. And we're replicating the nutrition function with coordination through Springwell and our fan drivers. They're delivering lunches to residents in need. And so that's, today we delivered 48 lunches. That's a program that's ramped up over the course of last week and a half. We also began this week the grocery delivery program. We have 15 residents already enrolled, and we do a drop-off of groceries to their house directly to their porch. So we think that's a great program, and it helps seniors who may be anxious about going into the public setting because they are in the high-risk category. It helps them get the supplies they need without having to venture forth into the public setting and potentially exposing themselves to someone who is infected with COVID-19.
Yeah, I have a question. You know, a lot of, a lot of the discussion centering around COVID-19 has to do with the number of people that testing positive. You did mention that in Needham, we, there were eight, there were nine positives. There are now eight positives, one recovery. You talk about, a little bit about, you know, there are so many people that they say have COVID-19 and for the most part show minimal symptoms and ultimately recover by being at home. What are we seeing? Or do we know any numbers of the numbers of people that are recovering? And what their post-recovery physicality and, and other, are they back to normal? Do they have to be concerned about getting this again? Is this the type of situation that, you know, if you think you've had, I know that I've heard people that have maybe had what may appear to have been a light cold, a mild cold. Could that have been COVID-19? And they recover without even knowing, without even getting a test?
Yes. One of the many challenges of, of COVID-19 is the fact that people are contagious before they're symptomatic. And the severity of the symptoms does vary quite dramatically. There are definitely individuals that are on the younger age spectrum that have had severe symptoms. But for the most part, the most severe cases are in those high-risk categories, the seniors, those with heart diseases, those with lung diseases like COPD or severe asthma, diabetes. We also include in that high-risk category the immunocompromised and women who are pregnant. We're always concerned about them. To your question, Mr. Chair, about residents who may have already had COVID, we have found residents, including the resident who's recovered, who is in very good physical health, who did feel effects that might be similar to a bad cold or a mild flu, but were able to recover with, you know, rest and fluids and time within their home. Other residents, you know, around the Commonwealth have not been as fortunate and have required hospitalization. And that's certainly predominantly those residents in those sort of high-risk categories that we're concerned about. There's not yet great data about the resistance and/or immunity of people who have had COVID-19 and then, and are then exposed again. It would be a very unusual virus if there wasn't some built-up resistance in the, in the sort of the immune system. But it's unclear exactly how much of it is strong resistance, how much of it is immunity, and whether the virus shifts or drifts a little bit so that it might pose a threat in the future. Right now, it's, it's too early to know that. But the, the operating posture is that when someone has been infected with COVID-19, has recovered, has been symptom-free for a period of time, which, you know, would be improvement or elimination of their cough, no fever. So if they were like that for 72 hours, we would think that they could go forth and safely interact with their, you know, in the community. So those, those residents can do that. I think the, the challenge, of course, is we don't have testing, as, as you mentioned. So it's, there are many people who may have been exposed to COVID-19, become infected, and have never gone to the hospital, may not have even called their physician because they just felt that it was a very mild form of illness.
Oh, thank you. Matt, question?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a thank you, Tim. Just a couple. One is a health question, the other is more of a financial question. But as far as police and fire, and I know I read about Boston having some cases on their police department. Can you describe what we're doing as far as protecting the first responders? And the second, I received a call about excise tax being due and some of the taxes coming up. Just seeing when we can, our timeline to making a decision on what we can do about people who are having trouble paying those taxes.
Sure. And I'll defer, obviously, the, the second question to the town manager and the Assistant Town Manager, Director of Finance. But, but as to your first question, Needham is fortunate that we are a well-resourced town, and we have very smart people who do planning. So we have succeeded in having personal protective equipment. We'd like to have more of it, and we are pursuing multiple avenues to get more personal protective equipment. One of the ways the select board knows that it approved a donation to Daqing, our sister city in China, of 100 masks at the very beginning of the pandemic in China, which was a very, they were overwhelmed. Daqing was in contact with us earlier this week and offered to provide masks and other forms of PPE now that the need is escalating here in the United States. We've been fortunate to be able to have PPE to protect our first responders, and the chiefs of both the police department and the fire department have worked closely with the Public Health Division and to review sort of the safe way to appropriately dawn a doff PPE. What is the appropriate PPE level? How they maybe modify some of their operating procedures to accommodate the fact that it is unclear if people are infected? So for example, I know the police department is having a support role in many cases that doesn't always involve going into a home unless there's a clearly defined need when they accompany fire personnel and EMS personnel to a call. So we have taken those steps. I hope that answers most of your question.
And then there was the question to, I guess the next part of the question is to go to Dave or to Kate with respect to excise taxes and real estate taxes? And if people are feeling burdened, if there's, you know, issues with the ability to pay? I'm going to cater Dave, whoever wants to take that.
Well, I would start, Mr. Chair, just to, further to what Tim McDonald said. In addition to the PPE measures that the departments are doing significant disinfecting, and they're taking steps like taking temperatures of employees when they get to work to, to make sure that they're, they're safe to work and that they're all, their coworkers are safe as well. So there's a lot of, there's a lot of cleaning going on. There's a lot of isolating going on to the extent possible. I would ask Dave to answer the question about the taxes.
Mr. Chair, the issue about the due dates for motor vehicle excise and property tax. The governor has filed the bill, and the legislature is acting on the bill that will give communities the ability to extend the deadline for bills that come due during the duration of the emergency. And we're waiting upon that action to be taken. Provided that action is taken and the bill is signed into law by the governor, we would be coming before the board to ask for the appropriate extensions. My understanding of the draft of the bill that's before the legislature, the authority to extend the deadline and for applications for exemptions, for instance, will be allowed by the executive board or executive official of the community. In the case of Needham, that would be the select board.
Okay. Thank you, Dave. Matt, that's good?
That's good. Thank you.
Bo?
Yes, I'm assuming that we're coordinating with the hospital to make sure that our actions don't compromise theirs and vice versa. Do we have adequate communication with them? And are they asking us for anything that we can help them with?
Sure. So I, I do know that the town manager has a call every Friday with the John Fogerty, the, the head of the hospital. We work closely in the, in the Public Health Division with some of the folks under John Fogerty, including the Chief of Infection Control, who's the nurse Natasha. We are working very closely with them. We're actually coordinating some small donations of personal protective equipment for the hospital. And we've explored with them some options for alternate care sites as well as community screening. Right now, the, the rate limiting factor really is the availability of tests and the availability of personal protective equipment. And the hospital's response to us is that they really appreciate our health planning, but they need to focus on their core operations. And when they get more supplies and when they get more PPE, they might need to rely on us to help them in those community settings, like a community screening. But they don't have the resources to support it right now.
Thank you. And one final question. Are we in touch with the continuing care communities to make sure that those communication lines stay open in all of this?
We are. And, and that communication takes place on two fronts. It takes place from our public health nurses, which are Tiffany Zeig and Donna Carmichael. And they speak to the clinical staff at long-term care facilities. It also happens from our environmental health agents, our Assistant Public Health Director Tara Gird and our Environmental Health Agent Diana Costa are in touch with the food service or culinary staff about best practices and ways to change your operations in light of the concern about COVID-19. And that's important for long-term care facility as well as other businesses and restaurants. That guidance is very helpful.
Thanks, Tim, and thanks for all the work you're doing on this. This is incredible.
Mary Ann, questions?
Yep. Tim, back to the long-term care facilities. I understand that the, the guidance as it relates to restaurants and minimizing numbers of people gathering. Are we still able to do that with the continuing care communities in such a way that they provide appropriate social support to their residents? Because I do worry about how we don't create a, a group of very isolated senior citizens if they're able, with appropriate social distancing, to at least see each other or something.
So right now, most of the, and, and it does vary because there's sort of a range, of course, over long-term care. There's, you know, skilled nursing facilities all the way to, you know, independent living and assisted living and sort of everything in between. The state has issued very strong guidance for these sort of higher acuity, so the skilled nursing facilities, the rehabs, that really restrict how they operate and what visitors they have. And it has, most have been required to move to providing food in non-community settings. So moving to delivering meals to a resident's room rather than having them sort of congregate in large numbers. I know that the staff of those facilities are working hard to think about social interaction because we know that isolation and depression among seniors is a major challenge. I think it's, it's trying to figure out how to balance that in the, the context of an infectious disease outbreak. And I, I don't know if anyone's come up with the perfect balance yet, but I know that a number of smart people are working on it.
Thank you. Kate, I, I think I heard something new that I wasn't aware of before. So we're now doing temperature taking of staff as they're arriving to work? Is that something that's instituted?
Yes, in the public safety departments, yes.
In the public safety departments, okay. And then, Tim, the last thing that I heard from you, again, that I think was sort of new news to me today is clarity. You said 72 hours after the end of symptoms. Because that, you know, normally people think of 24 hours and they're running out the door. So I just think if it's now three days, we just really need to emphasize that.
Yes. So the guidance from CDC, in many cases, is, has changed and is a little different. The guidance that we've been issued to employees in Needham, for example, is that we're looking for 72 hours symptom-free out of an abundance of caution. And so that applies, you know, to public safety employees. That applies to school personnel, rank-and-file government employees. The idea is sort of out of an abundance of caution, we want 72 hours between the end of symptoms and when someone might return to a work setting. Obviously, with the town buildings in reduced service mode right now, that, that isn't as immediate. But if we are talking about sort of staffing buildings, we want to make sure there's no potential exposure. So it's a, a bit of an extra level that we developed in Needham just to be very extra safe.
So that's a Needham standard as opposed to specific guidance from the state or from CDC at this point?
The guidance from CDC was to basically say that anyone who tested positive for COVID had COVID until they had two negative tests showing that they didn't have COVID anymore. Because of the inability of tests that proved unfeasible, because there were many people who would try and were unable to get tests and still are unable to get tests. So the CDC did release guidance about the course of illness and the passing of symptoms and being symptom-free. And the, the strong recommendation is 24 hours. It depends partially on the date of symptom onset from exposure. But that is the changed guidance that came out this week from CDC when it became clear that the inability of testing made the two negative tests an impossibility in many circumstances.
Okay. Thank you.
And comments? Yeah, unmute, unmute Dan.
Got it. First, first rodeo. Yeah, I thank you, Tim. That's a good report. And I, I just, I think I echo a lot of people's thinking when I'm saying that it's, it's, the response of the town staff has been really terrific in this situation. And also, I think that the residents are to be commended. This is a whole new system of organizing a community that we're working in. A lot of changes have had to have been made in a hurry, and a lot of patience and neighbor, and neighborliness is required. And I think it's worth emphasizing, this is going to go on for, for quite a while, as best we can see, changing week to week, depending on what the needs are, maybe more restrictive or maybe in some cases, not as much. But it's going to go on. And that even, and I think you had the comment that a lot of cases are not I understand the epidemiology, up to 80% are not really severe. But the severe cases can be very bad and even fatal. And so for, for people who may not be in the high-risk categories, it's as important for those to be involved in this, in this and, and community effort as for everyone else. Because the critical thing is, this disease is going to continue spreading. But it's important to slow the speed of that down because of the need to keep the severe cases from spiking up and overwhelming the healthcare system. And everyone has to understand that. And I think most people do, but it's, it's worth repeating. And then, of course, specific to Needham, a lot of people that I've spoken to, it didn't quite register on them when they say that being 60 years old puts you in a, or, or greater puts you in a high-risk capacity category. They, they connect that with, well, heart disease or high blood pressure or, or diabetes or whatever. No, just the number of years that you are over 60 is a health factor. And because in this town, most houses have either somebody in them that's 60 years old or greater or has an immediate family member that might not be living with them, but they're whom they're, whom they're in contact with that's in that category. It's really important that we have a sustained effort, and this is likely to go on for months. And we need to be patient and careful how we proceed and be good neighbors. So thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Tim, I'm going to ask one more question, which is, you know, you, you did talk about the, the PPE. What about ventilators? Have we checked in with the hospital? We have a hospital in Needham, as people know. How are things going at Beth Israel? And, you know, how is our supply or how is their supply of ventilators? And where are we? One of the things we keep hearing, you know, constantly, every day, New York and, and what they're going through and the challenges they're going through. And I think we all know that there are people in Needham who are connected with many of the Boston hospitals. How's our hospital doing? What type of connect, you know, interaction are we having? Are we maintaining close communication with them? And how are they doing for the necessary supplies that, that we're hearing about?
Sure. So I think it is a changing situation. It, it, it's something that is developing week to week. And we can see in New York, for example, a higher level of hospital volume than we're currently experiencing in the greater Boston area. I would say this, the BID, Needham has sufficient capacity right now. I think the concern is, as Mr. Matthews, you know, mentioned, the sort of extent of the spike in patients and whether the hospitals can cope with that surge in demand. Most of the surging in demand would, would come from the major academic medical centers are the ones that have the larger intensive care units, which is where you would find patients on ventilators generally. It's unclear exactly how many ventilators might be pushed to community hospitals or whether less acute patients would be moved out of academic medical centers to community hospitals, where community hospitals would focus more on those higher intensity patients and sort of transform and almost into an almost entirely ICU hospital. I will say one sort of point of consideration. A ventilator, I think some people may have seen it in action. It, it's not just a piece of equipment. It's a team that goes with it. It's a skilled nurse, it's a respiratory therapist. So it, it's not just a question of physical equipment. It's also a question of manpower and having the skilled staff that know how to run that equipment, which is one of the reasons, obviously, when hospitals are eager to get sort of any ventilators they can. But if they can get ventilators that match the existing stock and the, what their staff has been trained to use, that's preferable. When they're integrating new ventilators, they would certainly rather have new ventilators than nothing. But there is a learning curve for staff to adapt to new ventilators that are slightly different.
Thank you. Any further questions or comments by members of the board? Okay. Hearing none. Tim, thank you. Don't go away.
Okay. If I could add one thing, Mr. Chair? I did want to mention that the, the town, and I believe the select board has seen it at their meeting on Tuesday night, does have a new website that focuses specifically on information about coronavirus. It's needhamma.gov/coronavirus. It has a number of sort of very helpful links. It has videos, it has a number of sort of infographic displays which automatically pull data from state-reported websites. I think it's a great resource for Needham residents. We also created, through the Communications Office, Cindy Gonzalez, the PIO, a new notify-me group specifically focused on COVID-19 information. That group gets a daily update by email. And there's more than 700 residents that are signed up now. It went up more than 580 residents just in the end of this week. So we really are glad that residents are signing up to get information that way. And we think it's a great way to push it out.
Great. Thank you. Okay. Let's move on to the next agenda item. Consider delaying annual town election.
Mr. Chair, before I take that up, I just wanted to point out that Representative Garlic is on the line and listening in. She just wanted to let, make sure you knew that she's ready and available to answer any questions that you might have in the future or need requests that we have. So just noted.
Thank you so much for that. Denise, welcome. I know you're out there and I know that you, you know, but we know you're there. Great. You want to start the next item, Kate?
Certainly. Given that the annual town election is coming up quickly, it is the recommendation of town clerk and myself that the board consider under the act recently passed by the legislature, the postponement of the annual town election from April 14th to May 26th. We think that is far enough out, and that would give us another two weeks when we could perhaps have the next item, but to perhaps have our town meeting after that in June so that we could get these important meetings done this fiscal year. Again, as everybody said, we don't know what tomorrow's going to bring, but we think these are reasonable time frames. I would, the town clerk has much more specific information than I do. But just that, a couple of features is that the law that was passed allows a new voter registration deadline, which is at 8 o'clock, 10 days before this rescheduled election. It allows us to reuse the ballots that we already have, which is very helpful. And it allows different ways, alternatives to actually going into the polling location to vote.
Okay. Teddy? Tell us about the, the governor's Tell us about the governor's order and tell us what your recommendations are. And I know I am, I'm sure my colleagues have further questions about this. So Laura is yours.
Can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Okay. You're fading in and out. I'm not getting the whole sound. But basically, the legislation allows a municipality to postpone their municipal election originally scheduled between March 23rd and May 30th, up until June 30th. We've been talking about what's the best date and you don't really, they don't, they aren't telling the select board that they have to set the date today, but they do have to, but we're hoping you will move to postpone that to a date to be determined at a future time, thinking end of May, maybe the 23rd, 26th.
I think we should set a date today. And then if we need to change it further, we can address that at a subsequent meeting.
Okay.
I think getting a date certain so that people can, for planning purposes, and especially the League of Women Voters and candidates who are running. But continue, please.
Well, if you want to set a date, I would suggest May 26th for a possibility. We already have our ballots, they've been delivered. The state says we do not have to reprint the ballot, so they will have the same April 14th date on them. We'll have another voter registration session 10 days before the election so that anyone that may need to still register to vote can do so. And we will be posting the specimen ballot on the website fairly soon.
Okay. Questions? Matt?
Not at this time, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Mary Ann?
Um, I don't have any questions.
Mo?
No, just let me know when you want the motion. I'm prepared to make it.
Thank you. Dan?
And this is the election and we'll be talking about the town meeting separately. Is that right?
Yes.
Sounds like a good plan to me. Thank you.
Okay. Teddy, I have some questions, if I may. You indicated that this doesn't, the legislation does not require in-person voting. This can all be done by mail? Did I understand that correctly?
We can vote by early voting by mail, and they've encouraged that. But I don't think that negates the fact that we still have to have our polling locations open and available to the public.
Okay. Would we consider having one polling location for this particular election to cut down on the amount of locations where people come into and also cut down on the number of election workers that might be, you know, put in closer contact to residents who are choosing to vote in person? Could we consider one polling location? Would that be a possibility? Does it make sense? It's something you, that, you know, I'm throwing out. No decision has to be made on that, obviously, at this moment.
I think the laws that stand right now would require the Board of Selectmen to designate at least 20 days before a change in polling locations. And you also have to notify every voter whose polling place has changed by mail that you've done that. So I'm not sure whether you can do that.
Okay. We also have to consider, obviously, you know, if buildings of town buildings are still closed and we have all of our elections in town buildings, that I guess we would, we'll address that at a subsequent meeting. That'll be to be discussed further. Another question is, new voter registration deadline is 10 days before what we're considering at May 26th. That would be a Saturday. Would it be the Friday before or the Friday before the Saturday? Or would it be on that Saturday? How would you, how does that usually work? With?
I'm sorry, you broke up during that.
Oh, voter registration.
I didn't get all the question.
Okay. So the new voter registration deadline is 10 days before the election. For a Tuesday election, May 26th, that would be a Saturday. So would it be the Friday before that it would be the voter registration deadline?
Are you talking about the town being changed to a Saturday?
No, talking about the town election being changed to Tuesday, May 26th, and that 10 days before that would be a Saturday. I'll go to a calendar, hold on. And this is something that we can.
Why don't we get you that question?
That's fine. That's fine. Okay. And then we can also, will there be information put out, the difference between an early voting ballot and absentee ballot? Seeing that this is the first time.
Are you asking about the difference between early ballot and an absentee ballot?
For this particular election, is there a difference?
Yes, there is. There is a difference between the two ballots. The absentee ballot is required only if you're absent from the town on the day of the election or you have a physical disability or an illness. An early ballot is, there's no excuses necessary. You just prefer not to go to the polls. You want to vote early by mail. An early ballot, and that's what the state has allowed us to do for these elections that are being postponed right now.
So there will be a differentiation between an early voting ballot and an absentee ballot? They're not interchangeable. Somebody calls you, there is going to be marked early voting as opposed to absentee.
I have a question.
Doesn't matter. You?
A question, Mr. Chair, that might.
Go ahead, Mo. Ask.
Would it help your efforts administering this election if we encouraged people to early vote by mail?
I'm sorry, you keep coming in and out and I'm not getting.
I'm sorry, Teddy. Would it help you and your efforts administering the election if we were to encourage people to use the vote early by mail option available to them?
You, to use the early ballot?
Yes. Would that help you or make it harder?
No, we would certainly, and I, my office will encourage that also.
Okay, then I think.
Election workers will encourage it.
Thank you.
With that, any other comments by members of the board?
Mr. Chair, it just sounds like, it sounds like an FAQ might be in order between, you know, us and coming up with questions and answers for some of these issues.
And I would tend to agree. And I think that even though we are prepared to move forward with a motion to postpone the election to May 26th to give an element of certainty, that doesn't preclude us from coming back at a subsequent meeting and changing the election date again sometime prior to June 30th. Let's try, I mean, personally, I'd like to try to get the election in if it's possible. But obviously, it's the, you know, health dynamics on the ground that are going to determine how we move forward on that.
Mr. Chair.
You may. Kate?
We will absolutely work with the town board to widely disseminate the information and the changes. And an FAQ is something I know we will work on.
Okay.
No, I was going to make a motion.
Please.
Mr. Chair, I move that the select board vote to postpone the 2020 annual town election currently scheduled for April 14, 2020, to May 26, 2020.
Second. Motion in a second. Further discussion by members of the board.
Yes, if I could.
Dan?
The, I think that the question about what possibly consolidating the voting places for this election only is something that we might want to think about and get a recommendation from the town clerk and the town administrator, town manager on. From what I hear so far, that would mean we would have to make a decision to do that far enough in advance so that a 20-day notice could go by mail to every household in town. I'm thinking that with regard to this particular, usually having the five different voting places makes a lot of sense. But in this particular case, where we are really, I think, going to be encouraging and a lot of people are going to want to vote early or by mail, that people, that it's a town-only election that is in, voters, of course, will decide what they're going to do, but historically, the turnouts have been fairly low. We may have a significant number of our usual poll workers who are older people and have disabilities that might put them into at-risk categories, who might not want to work that day if they can avoid doing so. And we might even have to be acquiring, you know, using protective equipment of some form to work in the polling places. So there might be a logic to consolidating the polling places for this election only, maybe not down to one location, but to not as many as five. I don't think, I, there are pluses and minuses to that. We shouldn't decide that now, I don't think. But maybe think about that and get a recommendation from the town clerk and the town manager, you know, in the next couple of weeks so that we can decide what to do. That motion to change the voting date, I think, makes a lot of sense and it's a good recommendation.
Thank you. We have a motion in a second. Further discussion by members of the board? Hearing none. Matt?
Yes.
Mary Ann?
Yes.
Mo?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
The chair is in the affirmative. Unanimous vote. Thank you. Next item on the agenda, we come to consider delaying the annual town meeting.
Mr. Chair, if I may, before you move the annual town election, something the board may want to consider is that there are a number of public hearings scheduled for April 15th, including the children's hospital zoning. And given that you've just moved the election, you may want to move your meeting back to the Tuesday on the 14th, so that if people want to go to the, which is now scheduled for a Zoom hearing on the 15th. So that's just something to think about. You still have time to make that change.
Okay, great. That's a good suggestion. I think that we, let's think about that and we'll convene. I think we're planning on convening, I'd like to convene again next week, maybe next Friday, for another COVID-19 update. And we can do other business, take up other business as warranted. So we next come to the postpone the 2020 annual town meeting. I'll turn it over to Kate.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So in consultation with the town clerk and the town moderator, we would propose that the annual town meeting be postponed, which we would propose that the board recommend that the annual town meeting be postponed until June 8th. That gives us two weeks between the election and the start of town meeting. We currently believe we need action by the legislature and the governor to make this change, but it seemed prudent that if the board were to make this recommendation, people could plan on the date so that when we are able to make the change, we could go ahead and do that.
Well, can I, the question that I would have is, so we can make a recommendation, but we would still need legislative approval and gubernatorial approval to make the change?
The only statute we have available to us now is Chapter 39, Section 10A, which allows the moderator to convene and postpone an annual town meeting. And we don't believe that we're currently within the limits of that specific legislation. Getting closer, we might be. There may be a way that that could be done. It could be postponed and then postponed again, that kind of thing. But we, this specific, this specific matter is a common problem across the Commonwealth and it's contained in the legislation that the governor filed. So we think that legislative relief is coming on this, hopefully within the next week. And so it's still not clear who would be the board, the decision-maker on that, whether it be the moderator or the select board. So we believe that this will become clear, but it seemed prudent to have a date set or recommended.
Let me get some comments from members of the board. Mo?
The draft motion is a recommendation, so it is not definitive, but merely publishes that date where the town meeting to be postponed. Is that correct? So we're within the law by making this motion if we do.
Okay. Go ahead.
I think it's important to get the date out there. I think people need to be able to plan. I think that's also important for the moderator, obviously. So I'm perfectly comfortable with moving the meeting, although I think we all regret it.
Okay. Matt, comments?
Well, yeah, I agree. It's prudent to get the date out there and give people advanced notice of the date. I guess as we get closer, just be curious what we have to do as far as approval, if we ever have to move that date, or maybe suggest an alternate date as a backup so that if it is approved and it has to go through legislature and the governor, we don't have to do that again. So I'd just be interested in seeing if there's a way as we move ahead, if we have to give an alternate date that's even further down. But for now, I'm comfortable giving the date and going forward.
Okay. Mary Ann?
I agree. This seems like the prudent course of action for right now.
Dan?
Yes, it makes sense to do this. My only question is, does the motion also speak to moving the special town meeting that was to be held within the annual?
So, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, go ahead, Kate.
Mr. Matthews, the board hasn't closed the warrant for the special town meeting. So at your next meeting, we will ask you to both close it and set the date probably at this point, June 15th.
Very good. Thank you.
Good. Thank you. Could I have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move that it be the recommendation of the select board that the annual town meeting be postponed until June 8, 2020.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Further discussion by any member of the board? Hearing none, we come to the vote. Matt?
Yes.
Mary Ann?
Yes.
Mo?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
The chair is yes. Unanimous vote. Next item, we have annual town meeting warrant. Kate?
Mr. Chair, even though we expect the town meeting to be postponed past the May date, we do have some articles that we would propose that the board remove from the warrant at this time. It will help with our planning. And these are articles that, some of them that would require more hearing or more attention that we haven't been able to provide, given the current pandemic. Others that just don't, could easily be postponed to the fall, that they don't affect operations. The Community Preservation Committee met last night and voted to ask that they, to postpone all of their articles to the fall. So those are a good number of the ones that we're recommending. The others include town-owned land surveys that could be postponed, our billing and collection software application, the transportation improvement fees. We tended to do that in the fall anyway, so that's fine. Again, there's the articles for the community preservation, the articles and their budget. We believe that the Pollard School Air Conditioning System and then the Athletic Facility Fund, the Capital Improvement Fund and the Capital Facility Fund, all could easily be done in the fall. And this would also have the effect of if we're in a June town meeting, it might shrink the town meeting because that might be helpful for families.
Comments by members of the board? Matt?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My question was about the CPC and thanks for telling me about the vote last night. Also, we should probably give town meeting members a heads up. It might be a two-night special town meeting in the fall due to this extra.
Fair enough.
And make it clear what day that second night would be after we speak with the moderator.
Are we thinking of combining the, in the fall, annual and, well, additional articles that might otherwise be in the, oh, we're going to, well, we're going to clean up most of the annual prior, and these will be incorporated just into a special. Okay. Mary Ann, comments?
No, I don't think I have any further comments. I understand the strategy and I do think the idea of being able to notice that it's probably a two-day in the fall is a good idea.
Well?
I also agree with that and would note, if it hasn't already been stated, and I might have missed it. This will reduce the time for the annual, which might be good, given that we don't know what the circumstance is going to be, even when we're able to have the meeting. So it's a balance. It's good to do this now, I think.
Dan?
This is a good plan. Thank you.
Thank you. So, I mean, we could, theoretically, we're adding these articles to the fall special. I mean, we could, we might prepare town meeting members for a possible three night, maybe four. We don't know what the pace of town meeting will be in acting on all of these articles. Given some of them, there could be more discussions. So we should alert town meeting that it will definitely be more than one night. Can I get a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move that the board vote to remove the following articles from the 2020 annual town meeting warrant. They are Article 9, Article 11, Article 20, 24, 25, 26, 27, 28, 29, 30, 31, 35, 38, 39, and finally, 40.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion by members of the board? Hearing none, we come to the vote. Matt?
Yes.
Mary Ann?
Yes.
Mo?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
The chair is yes. Unanimous vote. And the last item on the agenda, we. The chair is yes, unanimous vote. And the last item on the agenda, we have discussed date for fall town meeting.
So, Mr. Chair, we may wanna defer this. We had picked Wednesday, October seventh. If we were to add an extra night, I think we'd have to go backward to October fifth, because the next week is a holiday, and then we're right into early voting for our federal election. So, if the fifth and the seventh work for the board, we could vote that tonight, or we could, if you are gonna meet next week, it wouldn't be too late to set it at that point.
Do we have comments? Dan? Thoughts?
No, I agree. Thank you.
Matt?
I'm fine setting fifth and seventh. If the board wants to wait, we can wait.
Mary Ann?
So, so I'm the guilty party here. If, if my family were to travel for a trip that we had planned for the fall, I would have just been arriving back from Europe. And so, the seventh would be better. I might actually be more awake, but I totally understand the fifth and the seventh.
Mo?
I think it makes sense to make this decision next week, when we have all of the elements, of all of the factors. We may have been overlooking something. So, I think waiting a few days to make this decision will give people plenty of notice, and we all know that it's gonna be more than one night in the fall.
Okay, I'm fine waiting as well. And I really do think this is going to, this is likely going more than two nights. But, and again, because there'll be other element, other warrant articles that will be, that likely we will look to add to a fall special. So, I'm fine waiting and taking this up next week, and thinking more about this. Do we have any further items to discuss this afternoon? Kate?
Need a motion to postpone that, or?
No, we don't need, there's no motion that's necessary. Hold on. No, 'cause we'll, what we'll do is we'll come back next Friday, and we'll, we'll vote the dates that we would like to move it to. Further business?
Just that then the, the board would be meeting at three o'clock on Friday, I believe that's April third?
Friday, April third, three o'clock, same time, same place. What I see everybody doing is they keep moving, this, of the boxes. So, when people are thinking, I'm, I'm asking, I'm calling on members of my board, that there have been times where they've rearranged the squares. I feel like we're doing the Hollywood Squares today. But this is definitely interesting. This is the first time that all of us have done this, or most of us have done this, Mary Ann. Some are more expert than others.
Nicely done.
It's fascinating how, you know, how technology works. And, you know, it's an extraordinary time that we're all living to, and living through. I would just ask for everybody in the community that's watching, and that will watch this broadcast, be safe, act safely, be respectful of your neighbors, and, you know, we will continue, all of us, to work through this. So, can I have a motion to adjourn?
So, move.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Further discussion by members of the board? Hearing none, we come to the vote. Matt?
Yes.
Mary Ann?
Yes.
Mo?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
The chair is yes. We are adjourned. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you.